Appreciate it. That you do, I want to keep letting that be known. All righty, Kevin T. Brocall.
Trustee Burchi.
Here.
Trustee Covington.
Here.
Trustee Herron.
Here.
Trustee Hill.
Here.
Trustee Montez.
Here.
Vice President Sierra. President Johnson.
Here, and we don't have anyone to attend to me.
No, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, we're going to do a moment of silence in present allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion. Prove the minutes on the number six.
A second.
Question? Brocall.
Trustee Burchi.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Herron.
Aye.
Trustee Hill.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. Staff reports, exact director.
Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, I was trying to read lips back and forth with Becky. Earlier today, we sent you an email that pertained to information provided to all of you and to leadership from Mike Freiberg about the Grandview Drive Route 29 effort. I know that's a question that President Johnson asks about the status of that project. And so we wanted to make sure that you had seen that document. It just talks about, there's really no action items in it, but it does give you an idea of the things that are still to come. Becky, I'm going to cede the rest of my time to Becky.
Sure. Staff, we'd just like to make everybody aware that there's going to be a public hearing on December 4th from 4 till 6 at the Peoria Heights Grade School Gymnasium. And that will cover that Route 29 widening, which will impact Peoria Park District property. So it'll impact a stretch of land along Befield Park, Grandview Drive Park. And it will both be acquisition by IDA as well as different temporary and permanent easements. So staff, just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware in case you started getting questions about it. And if you have specific questions, feel free to ask us.
I have one question, and that is, first of all, I do appreciate that this is being discussed, and I appreciate the memo that was sent out because I thought it was very informative, and I am glad we're on top of this. And I, I don't know, I never thought about this before, but the new trail, the new, the bike trail, I guess, that they're creating, is that going to somehow cross or get near the trails that we have that are on the bluffs above there?
No, this is just along 29 for now.
All right. It'd be kind of nice if, just thinking ahead, planning, that there could be some connection between the two at some point, leaving it at that.
Now, what are the properties involved for us to do this annex, annex in this land along 29? I know the grant, the lodge is going to be moved.
The pavilion.
The pavilion, I mean, down Grandview Drive. But every time I go on down for the Befield Park and all of those, what effects is this going to have?
It'll be like a 20-foot wide stretch that they'll have to acquire from us. But then when they do that, they'll put the bike trail in, and then they'll actually make a connection from that into our park, like to tie our trail system with it, like at Befield. So it benefits the park users as well.
How far is it going down? Is it going to Garner Lane?
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
Just to there, or is it going further?
Nope, it goes to Garner Lane.
That's where we're going to, okay. All right. You have any questions, Becky, anyone? Thank you. The Zoological Society update.
I'm going to do this tonight on behalf of Max, who had an issue tonight and couldn't be here with us, but we certainly, he and I have been spending quite a bit of time together, along with Brenda Oressa, who is in the back and is happy to answer any questions if I get stuck or if I say something wrong. So we want to give you a quick update on where we are, and I certainly know some of you are aware with some of the pieces that we sit with, but we have been working through the process. If you'll remember, the park board approved a contract with the Skystone Partners out of Cincinnati, Ohio, who is in the process of doing a feasibility study to help us to determine what is a realistic amount for a capital campaign to support some of the improvements at the zoo necessary for us to bring the older parts of the zoo up to the same standard that Africa currently is, and to address some of those concerns that were raised by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums in their last site visit and as part of our accreditation process. So we met with them, and you helped to approve an extension of their feasibility study focused to include a development assessment, which allowed them to work with both the park district and the Zoological Society to really assess our capacity as far as organizational structure, collaboration between the two entities, how we are built structurally to support and be the foundation for the capital campaign, which is the next part of their assessment. They came back to us with a series of recommendations, and so tonight, we wanted to just highlight for you quickly that there were 11 different things. Some of them are pretty simple, some of them were a little bit more involved. Several of them will impact the structure of our current operating agreement. So you will know, if you're used to our schedule, that in this meeting and in the meeting in December, we generally, you're asked to approve multiple operating admin agreements with some of our different units that we work with. And so in this case, you will not see a Peoria Park District, Peoria Zoological Society operating agreement on that normal timeframe as we work to look at some potential restructuring that will help to support the capacity of both the park district and the Zoological Society to prepare for a capital campaign and a long-term.
I found this on the web.
Oh, hi. And a long-term development of, a long-term expansion of our development efforts. So as we move through that process, we will keep you up to date. We have established as part of the PZS, as part of their board conversations, we've established several working groups that will help to work on those 11 recommendations provided by Skystone. Those include PZS and park district structure and operating agreement. They include beginnings of a fundraising plan so that we'll be able to be prepared to start building that quiet phase of a capital campaign as soon as possible in 2025, knowing that if we're going to stay on schedule with the designer Ace Torrey and some of the efforts to keep that project moving, we need to raise dollars in 2025. We're also looking at updating bylaws, member responsibilities, member engagement and recruitment for the PZS board as well. So those three groups have all committed to meeting once before Thanksgiving, and we certainly appreciate their support to be willing to do that at this really crazy, busy time of year. But as we move through this process, we will make sure that when not only Ace Torrey comes back to present the full final master plan, but when Skystone is back in town to present information about feasibility study, which should be sometime in February, that you will all be included in some level of that communication, as much of it as you're able to participate in. But in the interim, because there will be that sort of pause in that normal operating agreement process, we wanted to let you know that there are some reason for that and that we're working through something that at the end, we believe will make a stronger, better process for fundraising and development in the park district and in the Zoological Society. Brenda's back there, and I would also be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Finance Committee, approval accounts payable.
Mr. President, Finance Committee has met and reviewed the accounts payable materials that were provided in the materials, the agenda materials provided to the Finance Committee. And based upon that, we voted unanimously to approve a payment of the accounts payable shown in our agenda material, so I so move.
Just a second.
I'll second.
Okay, question? Brocall.
Trustee Burchi.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Herron.
Aye.
Trustee Hill.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. Update on the DEI committee? Who's the vice chair over there? Who's on that, you got a committee?
Is it okay if we have Brianna cover these?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Is that all right?
Yes.
Works for me.
Yes, I'm ready. Good evening, everyone. At the last DEIA committee meeting yesterday, we are proposing an amendment to the introduction of the policy manual. It is just to add additional language to make it more inclusive for all people, to add a welcoming resolution, our priority documents, and to add an acknowledgement of our native land history. It was approved in the committee yesterday with one small edit. That edit has been made, and so now it is up to you all to approve it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is anyone have questions?
So this is a review tonight, and then we will vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
The document is five pages long. On the revision here, is all that added to the policy manual?
Yes, for the introduction, it is intended to establish a welcoming energy and behavioral tenants for staff as they become acclimated to the district. There will be some formatting changes just because we want to redo the policy manual, digitize it, make it modernized. That will happen at a later date, once the verbiage is finalized.
So you'll add a section that says, "Our strategic commitments, we welcome all to our spaces," and then you add the resolution that was approved in June of 2020?
Yes, sir. Everything that is in red has been added. It's just to expand it and again reaffirm our commitment to DEIA tenants.
Well, I wish it, a edit to the policy of this magnitude would have had a discussion in our strategic committee rather than come up for a full vote at this time.
It went to the DEIA committee. Revisions that are currently in place are a part, yeah, that, this is part of our struggle a little bit, but it was a part of that DEI, DEI, DEIA committee to move those policy revisions that tied to updating language and to addressing those tenant philosophies as part of that committee structure. The committee reviewed these recommendation, recommended changes to the introduction, and it was referred to the full board for tonight, a review and a vote on December 11th.
I don't think I'm ready to vote on this because of the extensive change to a policy manual made by one committee, and I don't know how many members got to vote on that to move it to the board.
We're not voting. Aren't we not, we're not voting, we're just.
Tonight is just a review. You'll vote on December 11th. I don't know if that helps you or not, but that tonight is just the review of our two-step policy.
I understand that, but, you know, I'm hoping that it can have a broader discussion rather than just the members of the DEIA committee for this large vote of a change of the policy.
Or some area?
Well, I'm just not prepared to, I mean, I've read it. I didn't realize that, I'm reading it, and I'm thinking, are they really, is this whole thing really just going for a change in the policy without much more discussion on the board?
The main change, right, I mean, the resolution is the resolution. And that's about it.
Yes, that happened in 2020 before my time here. I felt it would be impactful to have that at the introduction of our policy manual to just again reaffirm our commitment to DEIA, but I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Montez.
Trustee.
Also, oh.
Trustee, did you need to look at, between now and December 11th, do you need to look at more? Do you want to still read it more? And do you have any questions that you could ask, or you want?
Well, I, like I say, I didn't realize this was going to be the whole change, and I would like to read it more before it's voted on and to have this extensive change like this. Though the acknowledgement of our land's history, I like that addition, though I did have a question when they talk about. Okay, in the middle of the, of the sentence, it says, "We are dedicated to fostering relationships with indigenous communities, respecting their sovereignty and supporting their cultural heritage." I'm kind of struggling with sovereignty since there's, you know, the, I think I understand what it's trying to say, but can you tell me what they mean with that word and that position?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm sorry, say again.
I'm not sure I understand what exactly you're asking.
What does, what do they mean by sovereignty?
I think that's up for interpretation depending on what's being discussed. In this case, I would say indigenous populations' ability to move freely and attain their autonomy.
Because sovereignty to me means that they have freedom over, or the control over a particular territory. And a number of people, indigenous people have reservations, and some places, they just have control over certain lands. In Illinois, there's no control, like in Iowa, they don't have reservation, but they have control over large parts of lands around some of the cities.
My interpretation of sovereignty is that they have autonomy and ability to sort of preserve their resources, their cultural heritage, to be acknowledged and recognized as the original stewards of this nation.
I mean, I don't challenge it, I'm just confused by it a little bit.
Would you like there to be an edit made?
I just have to think about that a little bit.
Is that now that they have to go back to the DEIA committee? I mean, usually, you know, it comes out of committee and then presents it to us. We don't normally.
I would say that's President Johnson's purview. If there are modifications that the board would like to discuss, we could certainly place this on a future. We could, you would have to have a motion to defer table. Neither, okay. Some opportunity for the board to have a further conversation.
I wouldn't move to defer. I'm sorry.
We have a board meeting on December 11th. If they want to have other conversation, we don't have another meeting of the board between now and then. So I'm looking for some Robert's Rules of Order for how to get that directive on, on the record and when and how we would proceed.
There's nothing in front of you to defer at this point. You're just talking about scheduling.
So, so, so do they need to move to schedule a further discussion? Or do you have to wait until December 11th and ask to defer or table it then?
I, I think that can be done informally.
Okay.
There's nothing on your agenda in that regard.
Well, it's presented for first read, so if normally our first read is followed by a vote in the next meeting.
Right.
We just let it ride until the next vote?
You can, or I don't know why there's a consensus to send it to committee to discuss. You could do that.
There's not going to be another meeting, DEI.
Okay. What do you, what would you like to do?
Is it possible that at the next meeting, there could be a discussion of possible amendments to what's been presented and then vote on those amendments and then the final policy?
Yeah, I think so long. Yeah, I think so long as it's not so radically changed, that it's not even the same thing. But that's, I think that's why you have a first read in the first place. So you can take a look at it. And if you want to make some modifications, you can do that when it comes up for a vote.
You know, I think it'd be helpful, Steve, if you talked to Alex and Brianna and in between, I mean, it may be that what you're talking about to be worked out informally and we can just move this along on our next meeting.
Yes, I think so. I think that's, that's right.
Okay.
But, but, but let me, I just want to remember the options here then. We can have the informal discussions and see if we can, if it'll go on the next board meeting. Or we can talk about any edits to the, which would come back at the next meeting also.
December 11th, yes.
And then that would be the first reading of that? Or would that be the second reading?
I, the way, I think it would be the second reading because I think, let me express my views on this and tell me if you, I mean, because I struggle with this a little bit myself in the past. So the, if every time you change it, you gotta have a second reading after that? You could be at a point that you never get to the end of the agreement. It seems to me that if the, if there's a full discussion, open meeting, and let's say, let's say that Steve and Alex and Brianna would agree upon a couple of changes, let's just say that. And that new document was published as a part of the agenda saying these are proposed amendments to, based upon the first reading, to be voted upon December, whatever date today is. Wouldn't that satisfy the requirements?
That's the way I interpret it. Unless, like I said, the changes are so drastic that you're not really looking at the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. You have other questions? New business, 8A, proposal to alternative energy consultants?
Sure. Staff recommends approving the attached proposal from McKinstry for consulting services to provide analysis and guidance on fossil fuel reduction and alternative energy opportunities district-wide. Staff had put out a request for proposals in July of this year and we received five back and interviewed the one that was, that stood out to staff that was part of the committee that reviewed the proposals. And McKinstry was the one that staff would recommend.
I, I want to really thank the staff for having gone through this RFP process and it looks like we had several competent replies. And so I'm confident that our staff's gone through and done their due diligence. The one, I did have a conversation really few, with Becky because in my reading, I didn't see this, but it may, it may be, may be in there that I'm hoping that a consultant can also help us look at various portions of our land that would be suitable for ground-mounted solar or smaller wind turbines so that we can begin integrating those ideas into natural areas where it's appropriate so that people begin to see that as normal rather than it looking like an obstruction or something weird out there. So that's my one hope. And my second question is the funding. So we will have remaining funds in the Energy Transition Grant? And what will we, will we use those for funds that the group needs to do things or?
So the Energy Transition Grant has specific items that were included in that. So one was for the consultant. Another one was for the solar, which will go on top of the building that will help with the electric train that'll be over at Glen Oak Park.
Okay.
And then there was some additional funding that was set aside for marketing of, what, what's the guy's name? What's the Sasquatch guy?
Forrest.
Of Forrest.
Excellent, Becky. Excellent. We'll introduce you to Forrest upstairs when the meeting's over.
Thank you. With that, I will move adoption of this contract.
Any question? Roll call.
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. 8B, Administrative Operational Support Services Agreement between the District Foundation and Peoria Park District.
This agreement was approved by the Peoria Park District Foundation earlier this year. We asked the board to approve the same document. It is.
Move to approve the same document.
I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. We have a calendar consent item. Does anybody want to discuss it? Or do we need to make a motion? I get a motion?
I will move to adopt the 9A. I'll second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any pending business?
Mr. President, I'm 10A as approval of the minutes. The board was gracious enough to grant my request to review those minutes against the actual transcript at last meeting. And that was, that meeting where we did that was only a week ago and I just have not had time to get to it this week. So I'd ask your indulgence to just pass this item for now.
Okay. Do I need a motion or?
I didn't catch up with the last part.
You want to pass?
I just want to pass it right for right now.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a question?
That's not what you mean by pass, is it?
Yeah, we want to pass it to the next, to the next board meeting.
It was tabled and so it has to, the motion, I think, parliamentarily wise, someone would have to make a motion to take it off the table. Otherwise, it sits on the table. Am I right about that or wrong?
No.
Here's the thing, all I'm asking, what I said is this. I just have it at time with, this has only been one week. I just have not had time to get down here to review the transcript against the recording. And so I'm just saying I'd like a little bit more time to do that.
So to move it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second. Is there a way that we could move that to January?
Fine with me.
It's a good idea.
All right, I'm, I move that, we move this to January, the first January meeting.
Tabled in January.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay, now it's going to January now? Question? Roll call.
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. I don't know if we needed a motion or not on that one, but. It's approved now, okay. All righty. Is there any citizens' request to address the board? Any citizens want to address the board? Come, the circle, I'm gonna come forward over to your right.
Good evening. I'm Nick Cowley. I live in 25 East Glen with the condos of Shatow, Richelieu. I have lived in Peoria County for all my life, except when I went to college in McCollum. I have lived in Peoria since 1987. Okay, I have three concerns. One is the corner out here at Evergreen Square, Lake, and across from Seth Q. There, the old water park is parked there. And Evergreen has improved with the new gas station and landscaping, but that corner is still an eyesore. It's overgrown with weeds and trees and probably a dead tree or two. And I was, my concern is, or my ask is, is what's the status of cleaning that up so that it looks better for Peoria and people that live in Peoria and people that come to Peoria? That's one. Okay, do I, is that it? I don't know what, or do I go on my second one? Or is there a discussion? Are you at?
No, go on your second one, yes, sir.
Okay. And the other one is, what's the status of the Splash Park, is it called? Was it to be at the old water park over here? No, where is it supposed to be?
Well, yeah, there is, sir, yeah.
I was wondering what the status of that was.
Okay, we will, okay, we just want to ask, what I want to do is get your requests now that you want to know about. And then I'm going to refer you to one of my staff members and they're gonna explain all of that to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
Okay. Third and final, in some of our parks, I've noticed that there are dead trees. So is, what's the status of getting those down, removed? I don't think it looks good for Peoria. And if we want to attract people to live in our neighborhoods or in some of the neighborhoods or to come to Peoria, drive through Peoria, around Peoria, I don't think it looks good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we will, I want you to give them your name and your, before you leave. No, not do it now. Before you leave, just leave your name and your number. And one of our staff members will definitely give you a call and talk with you about your questions. Those are some very good valid points and we certainly appreciate you coming to talk to us about it. But make sure we get your information before you leave. Okay. Are there any communications?
No.
Other business? Yes?
No, I've just been having some more concerns lately since we have this knowledge at the national level that there will more than likely be raids of people, undocumented residents. And that will probably happen in, could probably happen in Peoria. It could impact people in our programs, in our parks, our police, our staff. And I know we have our welcoming resolution, which tells us where we stand. But I don't know what it means if, what rights do we have as a park district if somebody's in our building and all that starts happening? And I don't know how, you know, I don't know how we find that out, but.
So just quickly, I would say to you that when this, this was a topic of conversation at this board level previously, we certainly relied on Pderma, our risk management group, to give us guidance about what our legal rights and opportunities were to be responsive. The welcoming resolution did come out of some of those conversations. But they, along with our general counsel, have supported us with things like First Amendment audit. And we anticipate that that will be the same process that we are, we work with them to prepare our frontline staff for that. And we'll certainly have the conversation with you once we've received that guidance about what is allowable and what isn't.
Yeah, I think we should all be prepared.
Absolutely.
The other is the July 3rd. And we need to have a discussion. I just wanted to know what your timeline was.
That's an agenda item for our December 11th. Okay, then we'll talk with you because we do want to, as we work through, at our last meeting, we talked about the different structure for our meetings with the board. We want to make sure that, I've had a couple of staff actually ask me about that, how we schedule that in early January and February to have those conversations and move that forward. So we meet with President Johnson, Alicia and I do on Friday. We'll have a conversation with him about a proposed 2025 schedule. At that time, we'll talk to him about how that layers in.
Okay, and trustee, all right, when would you be back? When would you be back to the city?
Snowstorm is January 7th.
Oh, okay, January 7th, all right. Thank you. Any other business? No action steps? Is there a motion to adjourn? Question? Roll call.
Trustee Burchi?
Aye.
Trustee Covington?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Hill?
Aye.
Trustee Montez?
Aye.
President?